Good evening. Tuesday, July 19th, 7:00 P.M. This is going to be the reorganizational meeting of the Southbridge School Committee. We will be looking to choose our new chairperson and vice-chairperson for this coming school year. I'd like to begin with the roll call, please. I'll call your name just here or whatever. Mrs. Lapriore?
Here.
Ms. Shea?
Here.
Here, Mr. Thomo. Mr. Murch?
Present.
Mr. McKenzie?
Present.
Mr. Messier?
Present.
And Mrs. DeMello?
I'm here.
Okay, we're all on board. Thank you. I'm running this meeting because I've been fortunate enough to be the longest-serving member of the present school committee. So what we're going to do tonight is elect a chairperson and a vice-chairperson. We're going to need a nomination for each and a second. There could be more than one person nominated for each position. So I'll begin by asking for any nominations for anybody here.
Sir?
Yes, Mr. McKenzie.
Pledge of Allegiance first?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America as we represent the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of all humans.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Please. Okay, so I'm going to look for someone to be nominated, or again, we could have more than one person being nominated. Could someone take notes maybe for this while we're running it?
I can take notes.
Mrs. Shea or Mrs. DeMello?
Mr. DeMello has volunteered.
Uh huh. And has a writing.
Okay, any nominations, please? Mrs. Lapriore?
I would like to nominate Martina Shea for chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mrs. Martina Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
That will be second by Mr. Messier. Is there any other nominations on the floor? Any other nominations on the floor? I'll ask one more time, any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mrs. Lapriore?
Martina.
Mrs. Shea? Ms. Shea?
Abstain.
Myself, yes. Mrs. Shea. Mr. Murch?
I abstain.
Mr. McKenzie?
Ms. Shea.
Ms. Shea. Mr. Messier?
Yeah.
Mrs. Shea.
Martina.
And Mrs. DeMello?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Shea. If I can correct that, I mean if I called it right, we're looking at six in favor and one abstained.
Two abstentions.
Two abstains, five in favor.
Who's the second?
Ms. Shea and Captain Lapriore nominated, and Mr. Messier was the second. And then Mr. Murch and Ms. Shea abstained, and everyone else voted yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Now we're going to elect, same procedure, the vice-chairperson to serve also for the coming school year. Could I entertain any motion, please? Ms. Shea?
I nominate Spiro Thomo.
Okay, we have the nomination of myself, Mr. Thomo. Is there a second on that? Mr. Messier seconded. Is there any other nominations for vice-chair other than myself? Mr. Murch?
I nominate Andrew Murch as vice-chair.
He nominates himself as vice-chair? Is there any second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. DeMello. So we have myself nominated and seconded, and Mr. Murch nominated, and there was a second to that. Roll call vote.
Can we have a moment to discuss?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Murch.
All right, so I do take a little bit of unprecedented action, as people don't typically nominate themselves for a leadership position. However, given that our new chairperson will be taking over, who I have worked with as her vice-chair as well previously, and she was my vice-chair this year, I think our collective approach together with the receivership, getting, being able to get the receiver back to the discussion, I believe is a proper approach. Also, being the only parent on the school committee, I feel it does empower more parents, having a parent in a leadership role as opposed to an ancillary role within the committee, by being able to meet directly with the receiver and the chair, to give the parental and student perspective a larger voice than they currently have. I have served this committee for the last three years. I will admit that last year I ran, I was trying to run a campaign for state senator, which did not work well, because not only was I not be able to make the ballot, I realized that I was not performing the duties as a chairperson properly. Withdrawing that in order to ensure that Southbridge Public Schools has a strong parental voice was the best decision, and I do, I've spoken with everyone on the committee, and communication was definitely the key contentious point for me being chair, and I acknowledge full responsibility for not being able to communicate with all of you properly. But this is a new year, this is technically a new committee, and I do believe that our combined approach with Martina and I has proven to be effective, and I think stability and leadership in a year that we are under review to renew our receivership is going to be the best thing to show the state that we are collectively unified, and we have stable citizens that have stepped up to the plate, and we have consistent leadership within the committee. That will help our argument to end receivership. I do believe that switching out leadership in its entirety will not show that stability, and I think everybody here has done a phenomenal job as a collective in our first year, and I would like to see that stability continue, and I don't want to see swapping of leadership or that inconsistency be the primary contention point for us definitively renewing receivership for the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murch. I will continue with, you have something to say? Go ahead.
I would appreciate everything that Andrew said. It is true. I do think that some change in administration is a good thing. I also think that Spiro Thomo has been on the committee longer than anyone, is more knowledgeable than any of us in areas of administration, of education, and of the community. His role as in real estate gets him talking to lots of new people coming into town, people changing homes. I think he has a perspective to bring to leadership that none of the rest of us possess. Again, I support Spiro.
Thank you, Mr. Murch. Thank you, Ms. Shea. I'll continue with this, with the vote at the moment. Again, roll call vote. Mrs. Lapriore?
Mr. Thomo.
Ms. Shea?
Mr. Thomo.
Mr. Thomo, Mr. Thomo. Mr. Murch?
Murch.
Mr. McKenzie?
Ms. Shea? Did I say that wrong?
You're voting third.
Mr. Thomo.
Thank you.
I'm good, I can't do those jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Messier?
Mr. Thomo.
And Mrs. DeMello?
Mr. Thomo.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Again, the new chairperson will be Martina Shea, and the vice-chairperson will be myself, Mr. Thomo. And at this point, I'd like to take, make a motion, or someone make a motion to adjourn this particular meeting. Mr. Murch made a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, seconded, all in favor? They'll be unanimous. Should we go right into the next meeting, or do you, you want to take a few minutes?
Couple of minutes.
Okay, we'll be back in about two, three minutes. Thank you very much.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, you have to gavel the meeting down.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Welcome to the Southbridge Public Schools regularly scheduled school committee meeting, the first of our new elected body. Call to order, roll call. Mr. Messier?
Present.
Ms. Lapriore?
Present.
Mr. Murch?
Present.
Mr. Thomo?
Present.
Mr. McKenzie?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Ms. Shea? All present. Since we just pledged allegiance to the flag, we'll forego that. Public input, is there anyone out in the audience who would like to speak? I see we have someone to speak.
Thank you. Jacqueline Ryan, 262 Hamilton Street, also a member of the Southbridge Town Council. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. I just first want to congratulate all of you who just got elected or reelected. Thank you for your service. As a former school committee member myself, a former chair, I understand some of the hard work and some of the tough circumstances you guys have right now, and I appreciate each and every one of you. We have some differences of opinions from, I'm sure, many of us, however, I appreciate that you're willing to give in this way and support and fight for our school system and our kids. I first wanted to make the announcement, the council just had their reorganization, and the new education and human services subcommittee has been assembled. I am going to be the next chairperson of that subcommittee. So I wanted to make sure that I introduced myself to all of you and let you know that I'm going to be here at every meeting. I think it's really important that EHS, as EHS chair, that I be here to not only hear what's happening at the school committee, but also be there as a resource in case you should need anything from the town side. I think this is critical, and I want to continue to grow and work on the school committee-council relationship, because I think it's paramount that we have unified boards as we go forward. I did, I have a couple of questions, taking my town council hat off and now I'm putting my citizen hat on. One thing that is really important to me is student voices. For a couple of years now, we haven't had a student representative up here, and it's state law. There's supposed to be somebody here, and it's very frustrating. It's how I got my start in public service, was as a student representative, elected by my student body to serve on the school committee and be their voice. And I feel like we're not hearing from the people we really need to be hearing from. That's the point of having the student representative. And it's a shame, really, that we don't have somebody here, and that there's no, I highly doubt that there's nobody out there that would be interested in the student body to serve on this board. I know there would be, and I think it's really important we have that perspective up here as the law states we should. I also wanted to ask if you guys had gotten a year-end report yet for the district? Is that, that's just a general question, if anybody has an answer.
I'm sorry.
The year-end report from the district?
Mr. Vilar, Dr. Vilar, has been on vacation for the last two weeks. We had hoped that he would be at this meeting. I spoke to his administrative assistant. She said he was not going to be at this meeting, but you can be sure that we will call him and set up the date as soon as possible to get the year-end report, because that should, I understand that the books close on the 1st of July, and that a summative, perhaps not the final summation of the school year, but we should know about how many students we've had, what the busing was like, and basically what the budget is looking like for the year.
In regards to the student representative, we've asked for that on numerous occasions, numerous, I think even when you were, you were on it, and you see where we get with it, so. Now, besides yourself, who else will be on that subcommittee? Do you know yet?
The council, well, I know the council membership. I don't know the citizen, who the citizen members are at this point, because we haven't had a meeting to approve the citizen members, but the subcommittee members are, I serve as chair, and then Councillor Montigny and Councillor Marquetti will be on the committee.
Good, okay. Mr. Councillor Marquetti, on numerous occasions has attended our school committee meetings, so that's good.
Thank you for the answer on the year-end report. I just wanted to state my, my own dissatisfaction, honestly. Watching these meetings, I see how much time you put in, and I've seen all the work you've put in, and how the school committee is run, and it's frankly a little frustrating to not still see, not see the receiver here. I think it's clear that this school committee's been wanting to work with him, and he's still not showing up. And it's a little frustrating from the public's point of view, when they want to hear answers from the man himself. You guys are great. You guys provide a lot of information that is supplied to you. But that man or somebody from his office is going to be much more used to the community to be able to answer questions. That's just my perspective, and I would really like to see some more updates in person or from his administration in some way from him. I think that's really important for the community to really, to really understand what's happening. And then finally, I wanted to talk, I'm sure we've all have heard the, what's happening in Boston, and the craziness that's happening there, and I think it's exposing what we all, a lot of us have known to be issues with the law. Not talking about the specific receivership or any problem, talking about the law now. I think we all understand that there needs to be some changes, reforms to it. I think what's happening in Boston is putting more light on that. I just want to, I wanted to read for the public record some of the comments from Boston about this, and I think they'll sound very familiar. The superintendent stated receivership is not a remedy for the issues at BPS. A city official stated that it would destabilize any of the work happening in South, in Boston Public Schools. Mayor Wu stated receivership is not even an option and would not be a recipe for success. The pioneer, Cara Kendall from the Pioneer Institute reviewed receivership law in this state and determined that it would not be helpful for a lot of the issues Boston is dealing with. But at one thing I wanted to point to was something from the union. I take this with a grain of salt, but I think it's really important when talking about this law. Receivership has a history of discriminatory, outdated, and inaccurate measures of school quality. I think that's so firmly accurate, because if you look at the statistics they quote, there's other districts who are just as bad or worse off that don't, that are not being considered for receivership, that have shown the same amount of systematic failures, but I, it's been pointed out by multiple ethics groups and equity groups, there seems to be a targeted pattern of receivership that's a little concerning, and it seems to go for minority-rich communities. And it's very frustrating that those elected representatives of those people are continually disenfranchised from the entire process. And I really think that if we want to address some of these things like receiver being here, we have to change the law and make him a little bit more, or not him, I'm not going to use him, because it's more about whoever's in the receivership role, make the receiver more accountable to the local community at large. It's not about having these pitched battles. This last year, I think I've not seen a pitched battle from the school committee, right? You guys have been really good. You've done some really good work, you've had some really good discussions, you had a training from Tracy Novick, great school committee member by the way, and great resource. I really think this committee has an opportunity to really work collectively with the receiver, and it's just, I would like to see more of him so we could ask those questions, and that the public can see in effect what's happening. To just conclude, I will say, just kind of think in mind, what are some reforms you would like to see as a school committee to this law procedurally, right? Just to see, what is something you would like to see changed? Because this debate's kicking off, it's getting major traction, and this is the time to be having this discussion, to start thinking about the legislative changes, so it's not personal, but it's also allowing more accountability from the state. That's it. I appreciate all your time, and I look forward to the next school committee meeting.
Yes, I just wanted to say really quickly that I know this was brought up once already. The receiver has come and met with us a number of times this last year, and has been here to answer questions even from a parent who showed up one, one school committee meeting, but, and today he is, as was mentioned, has been on vacation, so there is...
Well, I have more information about that actually, because I went back and looked through the record. Normally, we're supposed to have a meeting a month. Now, that hasn't been happening, or not, excuse me, you as a school committee have been meeting for, once, once a month. That didn't happen. We only had seven meetings last year.
Point of order, Madam Chair. The public input is only allotted to three minutes.
I request an extension.
I make a motion that we extend that for another two minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay.
All in favor? To extend to two minutes?
Yeah, I'm not really in favor.
Yeah? Okay.
Okay. Oh, wait, wait, do we have any opposition?
No.
Okay, so I want to make sure it's reflected correctly on the record. But we've had only seven meetings instead of 13, and Vilar attended three. It's just a little frustrating from my point of view, because I want to hear from him. I want to hear from him directly what's happening. He's the one who's going to have that information on that, and that's just it on that one. I think that we need to have more available time with the receiver, and I think that will lead to more trust being built instead of under...
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
I do hear you. I really think that now that we have a full committee, we're all trying to work together. We're going to be trying to work together with the town council. I think that with this kind of willingness to work with Dr. Vilar, I think he will be willing to work with us. We're certainly going to be here, we will be here every, hopefully the second Tuesday of every month as our regularly scheduled time, but we're going to give it a good job. We will be here with open arms. Anyone else?
If I may, through you, Madam Chairman. Thank you. Through you, Madam Chairman. I think that, number one, one of our problems last year was COVID, and that presented itself with probably a few meetings that were set aside. And the other thing is, there has been, I believe, all the way back to 2016, there's been opposition, and perhaps rightly so, to the receivership. However, I must say that from what I've seen of the receiver, his work, his ethics, what he's accomplished, I think that we are in a position to work together as a school committee. I think he will, because of that, look to be more supportive to the school committee, number one, even though we have no voting power. We are in a learning stage right now, and that's the area that we have to be looking at. The other thing is that with the school, with the town council coming on board and looking to work with the school committee and looking to work with Dr. Vilar, that unity is what's going to make a big change in our, in what we do and how we, successful we are. I don't believe that challenges, tactless challenges, I don't believe in arguments, I don't believe in, not in public. If we have a problem, let's say for example, I don't agree with Mr. Messier, I can, I can...
Mr. McKenzie, could we save this to your time, when each member gets a chance to speak? I understand what you're saying, and I understand...
Yeah, I'm just addressing, I'll be done in a second, I won't speak at the close, how's that? So I just think that we need to look to work together, and if there's any, if I had a problem with Mr. Messier, we would disagree, we might disagree, and they'll go out and have a cup of coffee after that. And that's the way I look to do things, that's my approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Chairman's announcements. You seem to have a ton of them. I thought I'd start off with the very positive one. School is starting. The official date for the beginning of, first day of school for all grades is the 29th of August. Boy, that was a short summer. Okay. I got to say that I've seen so many things on the internet about summer school, about Century 21, about the junior high school and the senior high school. I don't know who's doing it, but whoever's doing it's doing an awesome job. The little kids got to go to some kind of a bubble park, and I don't know why they didn't invite me. Okay, we have other good news. For those of you who don't know what an AP class is, an AP class is a additional kind of a class that happens during the regular school day, but allows students to get college credit. If they take the class and they pass the test, they get college credit. Even if they take the class and don't pass the test, they are more exposed to college classes when they get there. And this year, Ms. Landine tells us we have had the most students passing the AP literature class that we have ever had. And I got to say, way to go, pioneers. We also have more beginning of news, beginning of school news. Eastford Road Elementary School is having kindergarten screening on Tuesday, July 28th and Friday, July 29th, from 9:00 to 3:30. Please join us for a quick screening opportunity, approximately 30 to 40 minutes, so that we can get to know your child. Please call the Eastford Road School at 508-764-5460 to get up an appointment. I was lucky enough to work in the school library when they were doing kindergarten screening, and it is a joy. The kids come in and they're scared to death what's this going to be like, and in about five minutes, they're like they were there forever, so. And also, it allows the school to put your child in the right program for them, starting on day one. And it's so important to be with your right teacher on day one. It just makes your whole year go so much smoother. Also, we have pre-K registration for the fall. We have a few openings available for mornings between 8:45 and 11:30, and afternoons from 12:00 to 2:45. If you're interested in signing up your child for Helping Hands Preschool at Eastford Road, if so, please call the Welcome Center at 508-764-5414, or visit the website to print an enrollment form. All of these are on the school website, and all of them can be reached by just calling the main line for the school system, and they'll direct you in the right place. And all of that information will be both in English and in Spanish. Oh, a great library thing. You know, I always talk about summer reading, I always tell you, you have to do your summer reading. Well, this year, the library and some of the teachers have stepped up. They're going to have a special program at the library on Mondays and Thursdays from 1:00 to 2:00, and those are going to be talking about the middle school book. The middle school book is Refugee. I'm reading it, and it is not an easy read. Not that it's a difficult book to read, but it's very emotional. It's about children who are refugees. And I think that if I were a student and I was having trouble with this book, I would want to have some help during the summer, which is also going to give you a leg up when you go back to school. There's also an online program with the same information on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 7:00 to 8:00 on Google Go to Meet, uh, and you would be at your, with your grade level. Again, this information is all on the school website, and I think it's just tremendous that our library and our schools are working together. This is, this is great. Thank you. Members' forum. Andrew, would you like to begin?
Thank you. Uh, first off, I would like to, uh, thank the voters of Southbridge for, uh, my reelection as well as re-electing the appointed members that were appointed last year. Um, but I will admit, I am a little disappointed with the voter turnout. Uh, we had less than 1,000 voters in this election, um, which has steadily decreased over the last three years. The importance of voting in your local elections cannot be emphasized. Uh, the elected officials, not only this body, but the Board of Health, the Redevelopment Authority, all the way to the town council, um, are selected by less than 10% of the voters. To ensure that your voice is heard, I would encourage everybody next year, in June, to vote, or arrive to these meetings. If you cannot vote, to ensure, and these meetings, by these meetings, I mean anything conducted in council chambers or any public meeting that isn't conducted. Uh, open meeting law requires 48 hours' notice and a minimum for the meeting to be posted. So they are on the town's website for you to be able to attend and vocalize what you would like. Uh, again, points that I have made in previous school committee meetings, uh, we did have a town counselor and private resident who did speak this evening, uh, more so on council business than personal. Uh, but however, we have no parents at this meeting either. Uh, this meeting was posted last week, as any other meeting that we have conducted over the years, um, has been done. So, um, the realization that we have to gain the trust of the community is still there. Between educators, people that have worked in community service, people that have gone to school here and have decided to contribute, um, into education, um, are, make up this committee, and we have an obligation, not to us, but to the voters of Southbridge, to ensure that we get their trust. Because right now, by all appearances, we don't. And I hope that this year, it will change. Secondly, I would like to congratulate Ms. Shea and Mr. Thomo on their elections as, uh, Chair and Vice Chair. Um, I know sitting in those seats can be nerve-wracking, so best of luck. It's, it is, it is a fun venture, but it is definitely a tedious one. Um, and I would like to also apologize to the voters of Southbridge and the Southbridge School Committee for my lack of leadership. After the end of 2021, um, I will own that I was not the chairman that this town needed. Um, and I was not the chairman that this body needed. And, uh, through personal ventures is where I lost that ability to lead. Um, it was made ever apparent this evening. And I do appreciate everybody, um, having faith and confidence in me last year, um, and the voters that elected me this year to have faith again that I can uphold a position on this board. Um, but I did do the town of Southbridge and the Southbridge School Committee a disservice, um, by running for state senate last year. Um, I want that to be known, that I accept that responsibility, and I will own my actions as I always have. Um, I do look forward to this year being that loud parental voice on this body, um, that will not be queltered down. Um, my son is in the 21st Century Program this year because he was not, uh, to our standards and even to his own personal standards, uh, did not really do well in math this year. However, the 21st Century Program and the educators that are working this program have worked diligently to help my son improve his mathematics skills, so that way he's better prepared for eighth grade. I am not emotionally prepared for eighth grade, but my son is definitely getting the advance, the assisted education that he needed, the one-on-one from the 21st Century Program and the educators involved. Um, that program has done a tremendous job with its students. Um, I've overheard conversations he's had with his friends on the phone. Students are having a blast. Students are being engaged with by educators, and they're, if they are there because of educational, lack of educational performance, those teachers are thoroughly engaged in what those students truly need help with. And that, to me, just shows that the school system does still have good quality teachers. On the back half, there are over, there are almost three pages of full, open teaching and staff positions, um, and this year, for this coming school year, including the Director for Special Education, which has been, which was posted prior to the year end. Um, I would like to see the receiver on his next visit with the school committee, um, explain why, prior to the end of the school year, that position was open. Not that it was expected to be open, it was open. So for the last part of the school year, we did not have a special education coordinator. With my son being on an IEP plan, that is not the way a school system needs to function. And I'm not the only parent with a student that requires specialized education, either a 504 or an IEP. Um, I can sit up here and say that, I don't want to say that it contributed, it was declined, but not having that resource as an educator, not having the resource to be able, if there's any questions about a student's IEP or a 504, not having a director resource at your disposal is not beneficial to one of the most lacking points in this school district over the last six years. And I would like to know why, and I would like to know what incentives are being offered, um, in conjunction with the latest union contract that are going to allow for us to retain good quality teachers, not have to cut staff, not have to cut the budget, but still be able to get a well-qualified special education coordinator. I will die on this hill, on this dais, on special education is one of the worst thing, one of the things that we are the worst at and have been, the Southbridge Academy being the exception. The Southbridge Academy is one small educational facility we have. There are four other schools that need that in order for the general population of students to be able to get any specialized education needs that they have. And there are several special education teacher positions open this year, and there always have been, and I have not seen any improvement on that. I asked last year, there were a couple of incentives thrown around, but we're in the same spot again. And it's not something that is talked about on the town council level, has not been for quite some time. It is not talked about vigorously at a school committee level, and I am a part of that failure. Um, I believe that with a population of students that is struggling, when you look at our MCAS scores, which whether or not I agree with MCAS is a different conversation for a different day because I don't. But when you look at it, we are not performing well, and these, some of these students need specialized education, and they need those teachers that are well-qualified and well-experienced in that. And this district has not done a great job, and the town council has not done a great job of pushing that. I'm hoping with the new Education and Human Services Subcommittee that they can figure out a way with the new makeup of the body to be able to drive that point home without being vitriolic in the way they discuss it. Because I, there are members of that board currently that have been vitriolic, and I will hold their feet to the fire if things do not go the right way that they need to. This is a discussion that needs to be based in fact. This is a discussion that needs to be based not in passion and emotion. It needs to be based on the needs of the student, the abilities of the town to be able to fund it, and the receiver's ability to be able to fill these positions. I will fight tooth and nail all year long. Thank you.
Ms. Lapiore? This is our first meeting since the voting took place in June, and I would like to thank everyone out there who voted for those of us who were on the ballot. I also hope that people will start coming to the school committee meetings to support us so that we can do our jobs to help you and our kids in the Southbridge school system. As some of you may know, I work at Jacob Edwards Library in the children's room, so I'd like to let you know of a couple of things going on. We have had over 100 kids sign up for the summer reading program, which is pretty good. We have the school lists of suggested books and authors, which we keep at the desk, so if you're interested in any of that information, just come and see us. Uh, the children's room goes through grade five. The higher grades would go to the adult desk for information. We have had special entertainment on Monday nights, including a magician, a juggler, and a Lego master. Come down and check out what is going on for the rest of the summer. I have read about concerns on Facebook here and there. If teachers or the principals are not able to help with a particular situation for one reason or other, I would suggest coming to the meetings when Dr. Valar is here and see if he can help with an answer. You can also schedule a meeting with him privately if you prefer. As I have said before, I would like to be working on an end to the receivership. It will take work and cooperation from all. It will not be solved on Facebook. Thank you. Thank you. Um, Tim?
Yes. Thank you.
I, I gave Tim an assignment.
I'm going to get to the assignment, but there's a couple of things that I'd like to do before that. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Merck for the work that you did last school year as Chair of this committee. So, thank you for that.
Mr. Messier, can you use your microphone, please?
Yes, I can use my microphone. Thank you. Um, I'd also like to congratulate the new Chair and the new Vice Chair. Looking forward to having you this year. Want to speak to, I wanted to speak to, uh, some of the concerns, uh, that were brought up earlier with the, uh, public forum and, uh, some of the concerns that were brought up in conversation, uh, with Dr. Valar and the receivership, uh, in this committee. I, uh, I have been very optimistic since joining this committee about our ability and our willingness and our, our, uh, real want to work with this, uh, receiver. Um, and I, I don't think that I've been let down in what my expectations were in that as of yet. There have been some things, uh, that not everybody has always agreed with, um, through conversations and in, in, uh, meetings and things like that, but on the overall, I think that the core of this school committee with the receiver, uh, has been positive. Um, I also would say that, and I've said in other committee meetings, that, uh, I, I am pleased with the things that I see, uh, Dr. Valar in this school district implementing for programming to, uh, collect data and utilize that data to make changes through, uh, with curriculum and also provide supports for students. And so, you know, even though, you know, we brought up the, uh, the, uh, the possibility of having a student representative last, uh, last school year, um, and the response was not a no. I hope that we remember that the response was not a no. Uh, the response was, we have an election coming up, and once the election is over, then let's have a conversation. And I think that that's the important part that we all need to remember, is that Dr. Valar is open to conversations, um, and Dr. Valar also is not a person that wants to be put on the spot. And I think that it's important that we do what we can to make sure that communication occurs before something is brought up in a school committee meeting or in a public forum, because in a way, it is showing, um, a certain level of respect both ways, um, which I learned last school committee, uh, season, uh, last school year. And I think that it's important to make sure that we are accountable to that standard. And I think if we can do that, I think that we're going to have great success with Dr. Valar, um, because he's already got, he's already made success or had success in areas in our school district. And that's without a lot of community support as well. And I'm not saying that, that people are wrong in some of that, their frustrations. I'm just saying that there's bridges that need to be built, and I talked about that when I took the podium over there, uh, last school year. There's bridges that need to be built, and they're not going to, they're not going to be built overnight. And the, the more trust that we can build, the more confident we'll all be in whatever solutions we come up with. And I think that that is really, really important. I think Dr. Valar wants to do a good job. I think he's very ambitious. I think it's a tough job. I think it's a tough job, and there's not many people that want that job, you know? And, um, I think that we can make it work, and I think he wants to make it work as well. Some of the other things that I wanted to, uh, mention, uh, it was brought up that there are many positions open in the school district, um, and that is very concerning. Obviously, we are trying to improve all the time, and it's difficult to improve if we don't have the professionals in the positions that are needed. Um, and so special ed was spoke of, there's administration, administrative positions that are open, um, there's classroom teacher positions that are open all over the place, um, and there are lots of athletic positions open. And I know that a lot of people think of athletics as a sideburner conversation. But athletics are just as important as any club, as any, uh, teacher position, as an administrative position, because those, those activities are things that students can go and do outside of the classroom. They're staying out of trouble. Um, they're learning skills that they can take with them, uh, outside of the classroom, leadership, teamwork, so on and so forth. Um, and so I wanted to just read off a couple, uh, the athletic positions that are open because there are so many, and the school year is upon us. And if these positions aren't filled, then there's going to be a whole lot of kids that are disappointed that they don't have any after-school activities. So, um, we have, uh, the girls soccer, a girls soccer coach position open. We have a MS football head coach position open. We have an assistant athletic director at the middle school or the middle high school open. We have a cross-country, uh, coach position. We have a boys soccer coach position. We have a junior varsity cheerleading coach. We have a head girls volleyball coach for the fall. We have varsity cheerleading coach. We have assistant football coach. We have a head varsity football coach. We have junior varsity football coach. We have freshman girls volleyball, uh, co-coach, and we have a varsity girls volleyball coach for the fall as well. Um, like I said, there's going to be an awful lot of kids that are going to be really disappointed if they can't participate in an activity that, um, that they really, really enjoy. And to be honest with you, um, I was a kid growing up that if I didn't have these types of activities to do, I probably wouldn't even have gone to school. After-school activities get kids to school, because if you don't go to school, you can't participate, period, end of story. And we need to find any way to get kids to go to school. And that's all I have. Oh, wait a minute, I have one, one last thing, sorry. Um, I'm very excited for the school year, and I'm very excited for this committee, so let's get the ball rolling.
Go Pioneers.
I just got a quick comment.
Sparrow?
We're always talking about parental involvement, which is utmost, and we just heard a lot of good comments, sincere comments from members of the school committee. We've heard a lot of good things happening in our schools, but if the parents are not watching the program, they do not hear any of this. I've mentioned it before, why, how are we going to disseminate information to them if they're not watching TV? Why don't we have someone from the press here? Why don't we have someone from the press here? And the answer I got the, the last time I asked it was, oh, I don't know. I know nothing about it. Can you, as chairperson, call?
I can call them, and I will call them, but unfortunately, our local paper, um, the Southbridge News, um, has not, uh, not stepped up to the plate, and when you read the Worcester Teller... And when you read the Worcester Telegram, some days you wonder if it's just the Worcester Telegram and not the Worcester County Telegram. We need news. Everyone needs news. We can see what's happened in our country the past couple of years if people are only listening to someone's idea rather than the facts. Aaron?
Yes, I just had a couple of quick comments, and that was just, I had the opportunity to attend the Southbridge High School graduation for the first time, actually, this year, and was kind of impressed, honestly, with a couple of things. One of them was just the overall climate and culture. And I know Dr. Villar had been talking about the fact that he'd really been working hard at promoting climate and culture within the schools, trying to really encourage the kids, make them all feel like they're part of the community, that we all really want to help each other, and between both teachers and students. And at the graduation, I felt like that was true, that the kids were really supportive of each other, regardless of whether they were from different backgrounds or different academic abilities or whatever. They seemed like they were actually really trying to encourage each other and be on the same team, which, that said a lot to me, actually, as a parent and a community member. And I mentioned that to other people here in our community a couple times, and I got the response that, you know, actually, Southbridge is really good at that. And that was kind of encouraging to me. I hadn't really heard a lot of positive feedback about our school before, so that was nice to hear. The second thing, as a music teacher, was that I was listening to the band and the choir, and I was actually pretty impressed, and just wanted to give a little shout-out, especially to their director, that they're really working hard and doing a good job, and thank you for the effort that you've put in. So that's it.
Mr. McKenzie?
Well, I have a lot of...
You have the floor.
I have a lot of things here that I...
Nope, you have the floor this time.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm not going to be long. I'm just going to make one statement, and this is for the school committee, this is for the town council, and this is for our community. You get a lot more with honey than you do with vinegar. And let's just keep that in mind when we're looking to work together as a team with the receiver. That's it.
I truly hope that those of you who did not hear this meeting will make the effort to hear it. And the only way that that will happen is if those of you who are listening, or will listen to the reruns, tell other people that there's a new game in town, and we really, really want the best for our kids, our teachers, and our community. This is where we live. This is where our kids live. Go Pioneers.
Amen.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Next meeting?
Oh, sorry, next meeting. I did, our normal date is the second Tuesday of the month. I thought, everyone's very concerned about the end-of-the-year reports. I thought I would try to talk to Dr. Villar and see if there's a date that's good around the second Tuesday in the month, that we could get some of the initial end-of-the-year announcements, and by that point, it'll be August, some of the opening of school announcements. So I'm going to suggest that we don't set the date. I will let you know as soon as I talk to Dr. Villar what he has opened to work with Any other questions? I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second? All in favor? Adjourned.